Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order if we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance stood a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Heim, an alternate on the Commission. To my immediate right is Jeff Cohen, a Commission member. To the far left of the table is Steve Allenson, an alternate on the Commission. And next to Steve is Armand Menard, also an alternate. And next to Armand, to Armand's right, is Rocco Madarazzo, who is our Secretary. And to my immediate left is JP Benoit, who is the Vice Chairman of the Commission. At the lower table for our staff is Cynthia Kleiss, our Recording Secretary. And next to Cynthia is Casey Han, our Town Planner. Our next order of business was to approve the minutes of the June 9th, 2018 meeting, but Mr. Fitzsimmons, who is one of the Commission members, is not here this evening. And I defer taking up approving the minutes as Mr. Fitzsimmons always does a very good job in reviewing the minutes and making any comments or corrections that are needed. So with that, I'm going to jump down on our agenda. Actually, I would like to announce that there are several items on our agenda that will not be heard this evening. The first item is a public hearing. It's a special permit for warehouse and offices at 5 Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, at 5 Research Parkway. No actions requested on that. As that applicant has yet to receive approval from Wetlands. And it's been our position that until an application receives approval from Wetlands, the Planning and Zoning Commission does not take up the application. The next item that's not going to be heard this evening is item number five, which is new business. It's a subdivision, one lot, Wallingford Industrial Improvement Company, 228 South Cherry Street, new lot to be known as 10-20 Tully's Road. That application has been withdrawn by the applicant. And now, what I'm going to do is I'd like to jump down to item number four, which is old business, which is a site plan Paradise Hills Vineyard at 15 Windswept Road, Windswept Hill Road, excuse me. And at this particular point in time, Mrs. Han, there was an application, we have an application from, correct me if I'm wrong, Paradise Hills. There was comments made to the applicant concerning the application from your department, as well as from other town departments. Am I correct to say that the applicant has not responded fully to all of the comments and submitted a new site plan?
Right. So what happened is it was determined after they submitted that they needed approval from the inland, or they needed a determination, they needed to go talk to the inland Wetlands Commission. So that took up a little bit of their statutory time period. And then, so since that determination was made, they haven't fully addressed the remaining comments. And I did receive a communication, I had some conversations with their attorney, and I did receive a communication from him last week that they would not be moving forward. We had discussed the fact that they would be out of time statutorily. So I think it was just sort of a miscommunication that it should have been a formal withdrawal rather than just a sort of not moving forward request. So since we didn't, we did try to try to get that over to us, a formal withdrawal, but we weren't able to make that happen. So at this point, they are out of time for a decision after tonight. So the Commission should, since they have not formally withdrawn, the Commission should deny the application because we don't have revised plans and we haven't had the opportunity to review anything. Obviously, we would encourage them to reapply after this.
Sure. So the bottom line is if we took no action on the application tonight, it essentially would be approved. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. So with that particular case, I'm not sure if any Commission members have any questions for Mrs. Han on the item. If not, I would entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deny without prejudice, application 205-18, site plan Paradise Hills Vineyard, 15 Windswept Hill Road.
Do I have a second? Second, my Mr. Benoit, voting beginning with Mr. Heim.
Yes, yes, to deny without prejudice.
Yes, to deny.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, if the application's been denied. So if you please just let the applicant know that. And it brings us to our next item on the agenda, actually, the first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit, special, excuse me, it's a zoning regulation amendment presented by the Planning and Zoning Commission. For addition to 2.2 definitions, we're adding Section 4.26 to the Town Center Regulations. Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please read the legal notice and note all the correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, number 905-18, zoning map change to change the following properties from their existing zoning designation to the newly drafted Town Center TC District as specifically shown on the map filed in the office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall, 45 South Main Street, 1-423 and 4-432 Center Street, 13 and 143 Church Street, Wallingford, 43, 120, 139, and 147 Hall Avenue, 467 and 15 Meadow Street, 10, 12, 14, 33, 46, and 63 North Cherry Street, 28, 35, 41, 45, 57, 65, 79, 85, and 99 North Colony Street, 4 North Elm Street, 2-114 and 3-121 North Main Street, 19 through 29 and 20 through 26 North Orchard Street, 11 and 20 North Woodlesee Avenue, 26 through 178 and 51 through 183 Quinnyback Street, 9 and 11 South Cherry Street, 1 and 23 South Colony Street, 7 South Elm Street, 4, 35, 45, 50, and 64 South Main Street, 18, 24, and 28 South Orchard Street, 14 South Woodlesee Avenue, 0, 11, 25, 29, 43, and 45 Wallace Avenue, 163 Washington Street, 10 through 20, and 13 through 21 Williams Street. The proposal map change is available at and...
You can continue, but we, yeah. I didn't want to interrupt your rhythm, but we were taking up the first one, these zoning text amendments. So if you please read that one, and then we'll give you an opportunity to reread the second one.
We're not hearing one tonight, and that's number one, so.
I apologize. I should have stopped you a little sooner.
Yeah. Okay. No problem.
But you were doing so well.
Want me to start over?
No, just with the number one, the zoning text amendment, please.
Just this one. Okay. Sorry. Try it again. 904-18, zoning text amendment for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to A, create new zoning regulations, 4.26 Town Center District, to include but not to be limited to the following, allow for mixed-use development, including upper-story residential use by right at a limited town center area, and allow for decreased modified parking requirements generally consistent with the parking requirements for the CA6 zone approved in June 2016. And B, add to 2.2 definitions in association with creation of the Town Center District. C, make associated changes to the following sections of the zoning regulations in order to remove references to the CA6 zone and/or where appropriate to reference the Town Center Zone. 3.1, establishment of districts, 4.5, Point D, Point 3, commercial CA, 5.1, Point B, schedule of lot and building requirements, 6.9 signs, and 6.12 landscaping, screening, and buffer areas. Want the rest of that?
Yeah, the rest, if you would please.
I'm sorry. The proposed regulations, it should be, I think, are available at. And questions may be directed to the Planning and Zoning Department, Town Hall, 45 South Main Street, or at 203-294-2090. The proposed regulation in its entirety is also filed in the office of the Town Clerk, 45 South Main Street, and is posted for viewing on the Town of Wallingford website at www.town.wallingford.c t.us.
And then if you please note the correspondence for the record. Yes. Number two.
Number one, number, okay. All right. We have a letter dated April 10th, 2018. Correspondence dated April 30th, 2018. Is this, now, is this continued correspondence? I believe this is continued correspondence. Correspondence dated March 8th, 2018. Memorandum to Casey Han, Town Planner, from Janice Small, Corporation Counsel, dated March 8th, 2018. Interoffice memorandum, a referral. Application 901-18 dated February 14th, 2018. Interoffice memorandum to Casey Han, Wallingford Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated March 1st, 2018. Correspondence dated March 8th, 2018. Interoffice, interdepartmental referral, application 904-18 dated July 6th, 2018, signed by the Fire Marshal. A density report dated 7/5, 2018. Correspondence dated March, oh, I'm sorry, May 31st, 2018. Density examples. No date. What would this be? Okay. Copies of chap, like this.
Copies of chapter two.
Chapter two. Chapter two of Wallingford Plan of Conservation and Development. And that would be it.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. And as Mr. Fitzsimmons is not here this evening, Mr. Heim, I'd ask you if you would please sit in for Mr. Fitzsimmons and act on all of the applications that we have this evening. Before I get started, I'd just like to make some general comments. This evening, we're going to be discussing and hopefully acting upon the Planning and Zoning's proposed Town Center Regulations, as well as a proposed zoning map amendment, which would delineate the Town Center. You know, the purpose of the Town Center Regulations is to encourage development and redevelopment in the Town Center, and to make it more pedestrian-friendly and more of a commercial destination, while attempting to maintain the characteristics of a small town through design standards. What the Commission is attempting to do is to lay out a planning foundation that creates an environment that enables and generates appropriate development opportunities within the Town Center. The Commission is attempting, is not attempting to direct how a property owner may develop her or his property, but rather to present opportunities to spur development. You know, the Commission has been in the process of developing these regulations for approximately one year. This will be the second public hearing that the Commission has held on these proposed regulations. In addition, it has held five workshops. During the public hearing, the Commission received comments from the public, as well as from the Town's Corporate Council, which resulted in the Commission subsequently having two additional workshops to further discuss the proposed regulations. During the entire process of developing these regulations, whether it be during the public hearing or during workshops, the process was open to the public to voice their suggestions, concerns, and/or criticisms. You know, the Commission attempted to make the process as transparent as possible, because this should not be the Planning and Zoning Commission's vision of Wallingford's Town Center, but rather should be the community's vision of how the Town Center should be developed. You know, about two years ago, the Commission updated its Plan of Conservation and Development. As part of that process, a committee was organized, which included members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as members of other Commissions, representatives from various organizations within the town, and members of the public. That Commission held numerous workshops, as well as gave all interested members of the public the opportunity to participate in a survey. One of the results of that survey was that the majority of individuals who responded viewed larger-scale development in the downtown appropriate, as well as fill-in development throughout the Town Center. There was also a desire to essentially better connect the so-called uptown with the downtown areas to create a more vibrant Town Center. You know, I believe it's fair to say that the Town Center has been limited, or has seen limited change since the 1960s. There have been some properties that have been improved, and that's a credit to the owners and the business individuals who have made those improvements. There's also been minor improvements to signage and lighting. But the basic appearance, to a large degree, of our Town Center has not changed. And depending upon one's opinion, that may not be a bad thing. We all have different opinions, and certainly all opinions and/or criticism should be heard and considered. I believe in crafting these regulations, the Commission has allowed for that, and will continue to allow for that tonight. However, I would point out that the most effective type of criticism is constructive criticism. Numerous years ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the Incentive Housing Zone Regulations. You know, at that time, it was hoped that this would be a catalyst for development at downtown. However, this has not occurred, and there's been essentially no activity. I believe that part of the reason some property owners have limited interest in development of their properties is the fact that some don't live in Wallingford, and in fact, some, perhaps many, live out of state, and they're content to simply collect rents. And again, that's their prerogative. You know, I suspect, in order to have an economically viable project, because many of the properties in our Town Center are small parcels, one would have to assemble multiple properties, and that could become very costly, depending on the price someone's asking for their respective properties. In my opinion, in some cases, the prices property owners are asking for their properties may make a potential development project not economically viable. With these Town Center Regulations, the Commission's attempting to create an atmosphere where developers will look at Wallingford as a community, where she or he may want to invest to be part of the development and redevelopment of our Town Center. But there has to be a balance between the needs of the developer to have an economically viable project, as well as the town to have the ability to be assured that development or the redevelopment will be in character with the town's vision, and will assist in creating an attractive and vibrant Town Center. It simply can't be a one-way street on either side. You know, prior to asking our Town Planner to provide an overview about the process that she and the Commission undertook in developing these regulations, as well as to provide an overview of the regulations, I'd like to thank those members of the public who attended our previous workshops, as well as our prior public hearing. And I'd also like to thank the members of the public that are here this evening for attending. And especially, I'd like to thank our Town Planner for all she's done in developing these regulations, as I know it's been a very time-consuming project, and a project that she's accomplished in a very professional manner. You know, and after Mrs. Han provides an overview of the process and the specifics of the regulations, then the public will have an opportunity to comment on these proposed regulations. So with that, Mrs. Han, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a few sort of introductory comments from here, because that way I can kind of face everybody. And when I'm sitting at the table, I have to have my back to everybody. And then, when I go to talk about the actual proposed zone and the actual proposed regulation, I'm going to move over there so I can show, bring it up on the PowerPoint, so everybody can kind of see it. So as some background for our proposed Town Center Regulations, which are before the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight, as many of you are aware, there has been conversation for quite a long time about the potential of developing like a true Town Center Zone, in order to facilitate some of what we would like to see happen there. Some of what does exist there now, some of what I think could use some improvement that we'd like to see created in parts of the Town Center. And I've looked back through their many, many files from different conversations over the decades. And there's this document from 1998, which was a Vision for the Future of Downtown Wallingford, and it talks about some of the potential and a lot of what we're talking about tonight. There was also some streetscape designs that were done in 1998, some of which have been implemented, some of which actually were in the process of working on now. And there was actually a draft that was generated for some potential regulation that I came across, sort of a very basic draft, in around 2007, but it didn't get traction, it never moved forward. And if you look back through old plans of conservation and development from the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, the 2000s, where they all talk about how much potential downtown Wallingford has, or Wallingford Town Center has. And I should say, I say Town Center, we are calling it the Town Center Zone, and that's intentional. I'm very aware, or, you know, we're all very aware that a lot of people refer to uptown and downtown, the top of the hill and the bottom of the hill. We would like to see some cohesiveness between those two areas. There are some characteristics about the areas that are different, but they create the heart of Wallingford, and they create the potential for an area that draws people to Wallingford and makes it unique. So that's a very intentional decision to call it the Town Center, and to call it the Town Center Zone. At the bottom of the hill, in the future, there's discussion about, we do have the Incentive Housing Zone at the bottom of the hill. There is discussion moving forward in our Plan of Conservation and Development about some transit-oriented development zone around the station to connect to our Town Center Zone in the future. But we really see the potential that exists as being in that united Town Center. Yes, you have to walk up or down the hill, but there's parking on both ends, and there's opportunity on both ends. So that's why the Town Center reference. But over the years, there's been a lot of discussion about the potential in that area. And then there's also discussion in the various plans of development about some of the challenges that the area faces, and they're always the same challenges. There's, there is the geographical component of the hill. There is the need to perhaps better identify our parking and to direct people to our parking. But there's always the conversation that there is parking, but people aren't necessarily using it, or we're not necessarily maximizing the efficiency of it. There is discussion about the fact that there are a lot of small properties owned by a lot of different people. So all of the challenges that we're facing today, and then there are recommendations about building form standards, and different parking requirements, and encouraging unification of property. So those are all the things that we're trying to do in these regulations, and that the Commission has worked very hard to, I think, try to get there. We're really trying to make something happen. So this has been talked about for a long time. And then, as Chairman Sechter referenced, in June of 2016, we approved our most recent Plan of, 10-year Plan of Conservation and Development, which included an entire section just on the Town Center, because that's what we decided we wanted to have a section just about that, because it's so important right now. There's a lot happening in that area right now, and this is really the time for us to take advantage of it or not, especially with the changes to the trains, the train station, with some of the other improvements that have been made. We actually, I was going to reference this later, but we just received a grant from the state to pursue streetscape improvements between the Center Street and Route 5 area up to the new station on Route 5. So again, we're really trying to come at it from all angles, and to kind of take advantage of some of the energy that's happening, and to keep the ball rolling. And to keep, there was a lot of energy that was drummed up when we did the Plan of Conservation and Development, and when we did our TOD Plan, and we really want to keep that energy going, too, to try to make some things happen in this area, because it's so important to the identity of Wallingford. So we've been talking about this for a long time. Once the plan was adopted in 2016, actually, before the plan was adopted, we started working on one component of these Town Center regs, which was the change to the parking requirements. Those were adopted in 2017, and since around August, September of 2017, is when we started working on the remainder of the regulations for the Town Center Zone. We had three workshops leading up to the first round of public hearings, and then we've had two workshops since then. And, you know, when we had the last round of public hearings, I was, and I shared this at the public workshops that we had, I was a little disappointed by, I think, some of the reaction, or a little taken aback by some of the reaction, because I feel like this is such an exciting opportunity for Wallingford, and I feel like it's so important for us to be doing something right now. And I feel that it's really the time. And we hear a lot of people being tired of us writing plans and putting them up on a shelf and not doing anything with them. And this is us doing something with them. This is, this was like, I believe, the top priority for the Planning and Zoning Commission that was identified in our Plan of Conservation and Development. So I think it's a really positive thing. And it's not something that, I perceived a little bit that there was an impression that this is something that's being forced on people, and that's not the intention at all. This is meant to create opportunity for people. This is meant to facilitate development, but development that we feel, and that the Commission feels, is really appropriate for the Town Center, which is why we have the components built into it that we do. We have the building form requirements built into it. We have some other restrictions built into it, but we also have a lot of allowances built into it. I think there's the right give, and there's the right take in these regulations. So, and also because it had been so strongly recommended in our Plan of Conservation and Development, this idea of catalyzing high-quality redevelopment investment in high occupancy in the Town Center. And our Plan of Conservation and Development in several places really talks about a lot of things that can be done to take advantage of the Town Center, and this is one big part of it. And then there are some other parts that we're trying to work on simultaneously as well. So that being said, I also think a lot of really good things came out of the additional conversations that we had, and out of the additional workshops that we held after those public hearings, where the applications were withdrawn. I think we got some really good input from the public. I think we made some good adaptations to the proposal, both the proposed zoning boundaries and to the proposed regulation. So I think it's come out that much stronger. I think there were some issues that were identified that have hopefully been addressed, and like I said, I think make the regulation stronger, and anticipated some things that might come up in the future. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunities that I hope are presented by the creation of these regulations and this zone. And I think that the idea here is really to build on the successes that we have had, and to make improvements where needed, and to really do some responsible planning. So the other, just sort of in closing these parts, this part of the comments, as I said earlier in my comments, I think that this is a really important time, and a really important time to take advantage of this. and a really important time to take advantage of this opportunity. The commission can't do everything because they don't own the properties. And so this is really our, our working with property owners to try to make something happen, but to also try to make sure that it's something that's appropriate for the town and something that is designed in a way that is conducive to what we feel is appropriate for Wallingford Town Center. We don't have to do anything. We, we could choose to do nothing, but that's not what we've heard from people for the last decades. And that's certainly not what we heard when we were working on this most recent plan of conservation and development. And I think it would be a shame, I think it would be a missed opportunity. So I'm really hoping that tonight will be the culmination of all the effort that has been made by so many people. And I would echo the chairman's sort of thanks and appreciation of everyone that has been so involved in this, because it has been a very involved, and it should be a very involved process. You know, I think the commission has worked really hard. The input from the public has been really appreciated. And so I'm hoping that this is sort of an exciting time for us. So to that end, I'm going to move over to the computer now and just sort of review in hopefully not too long-winded, but in a detailed enough explanation of what's proposed in terms of the town center zone and the background. And then some of the things that were raised since the last public hearing and how we addressed those and some of the changes that were made to address those. Okay. Okay. And so my apologies for having my back to the public. Okay, so as we discussed, we've done a lot of planning over the last several years in order to prepare for this. We've done some, we did visioning sessions as part of our plan of conservation and development. We've done some workshops. We had meetings for the incentive housing zone, which is restricted to the, the downtown or lower part of the hill area. But that did involve a lot of discussions where we did start thinking about and looking at design requirements and building form standards and general site design requirements. We also had similar discussions during our TOD plan meetings where we really solidified where sort of the TOD area would be and where our town center area would be. And I think one of the important things that came out of that conversation was the idea that a TOD area, or what we would choose as our TOD area in the station area, would really be the, probably the highest density residential component. So that would be more in the Route 5 area, Cherry Street area immediately around the station. And that would be the area that would have the highest density with some, in terms of residential, with some supportive commercial. And then the town center area conversely would be the area that would have still a decent, still a sizable residential density or a decent residential density, but is really meant to be a primarily commercial zone where the residential components are supportive of that commercial component. And that's what our TOD plan recommended, that's what our P O C D recommends. And I, and it makes a lot of sense. The residential in the area around and, and sort of walkable to the station would, would support the businesses within the town center area. So, and then we can provide some supportive residential in that area as well, but it's not meant to be a primarily residential area. And that's where some of this, the design for the regulations came from. We also had several workshops and public hearings for the parking regulation, which was, as I said, approved in 2017 and is sort of incorporated into this regulation where our parking requirements, the, the parking requirements in that area are reduced. And then there are several options to allow people to further reduce their parking requirement. So if you can't provide for the parking on site because of your land restrictions, there are other options available that still serve to buy special permits. So the commission would consider on, consider it on a case by case basis. But you can provide for parking in other ways or parking benefits in other ways. And I'll get into that a little bit further. But we did talk about that a great deal. And then we've now, as I said, had five workshops to discuss this specifically. So we've had a lot of in, public input, we've done a lot of planning. And now we're really trying to do the implementation component. So as I said, the essential sort of components of the regulation are, or I will say the, the sort of essential components in summary of this regulation. There are a few more copies up on the table too, if anybody wants them. But the, the sort of the basics are residential uses in most of the properties that are proposed to be in this zone, because some are in different zones, but in the, in the current CA 6 zone, which is where most of the properties are located, residential uses are limited, are, are potentially allowed by, are, are potentially allowed on upper stories, but they require a special permit. What this regulation would propose to do is to allow residential use by right on upper stories. And then there is an exception for accessible units on the first floor. But there is a density limit. So someone would not have to apply for a special permit. You would be allowed to do it by site plan approval only to put residential units on the upper stories. It would maximize as proposed at 26 units per acre to 30 units per acre. The difference is in the new proposed zone, the current lots, the proposed minimum lot size is 25,000 square feet. Obviously, there are many properties in town that are not 25,000 square feet. So if you don't meet that requirement, we are not going to make, we can't make you meet that requirement. You're not, you can still redevelop on your property, but you're more limited in terms of the density because you haven't met that requirement and because you have a more limited property. If you meet the 25,000 minimum lot area by joining properties, or you just already do, then you're entitled to 30 units per acre. And so that would be by right. The second major component of this is building form and site layout standards. So this, this was something that came up. This was one of the, and I'll get into it a little further, but this was something that came up. So the second component is a basically what we call hybrid zoning. It's a combination of traditional Euclidean, which is use-based zoning, where we discuss what uses are permitted in a zone and form-based zoning. So I know the comment had been raised previously that we should have form-based, form-based requirements in here. And those actually were already written into the regulation in, in pretty good detail. So we do have form-based requirements in here. It's an important and very substantial component of the regulation, actually. Since that public hearing, we did beef them up further based on the conversations that we had and, and on a lot of the public input that we had. Basically what that means is we can't dictate full building design. So we can't dictate building color, we can't dictate building materials. But we can have building form requirements. And so what that contemplates is how the building is arranged on the lot, what the layout of the building is, what your window requirements are, what your roof line requirements are. So sort of how the building is situated on the lot and, and how it's generally laid out. One of the things, I'll get into that a little further in a minute. So the hybrid zoning, we added new form-based standards. And we also modified the site design standards and the site layout standards. So lot and bulk requirements, coverage requirements, things like that to be more appropriate or to be appropriate to a town center. We also have some access management requirements that are newly incorporated into it. And again, that's to try to create that walkable town center area where we don't have curb cuts all the way down the street. So it encourages shared use of access, use of existing accesses, things along those lines. And then finally, the parking changes, which I did talk about to some degree. The other notable thing about the parking changes is within an existing building, you can interchange any existing use regardless of the change to parking requirements that would normally occur. So if you went from retail to restaurant, normally the parking requirement goes up. What we decided is that basically the existing building is the existing building and within that existing building, you could interchange those uses regardless of what your parking situation is. And that's again, based on the fact that we have public parking, on-street parking and a lot of shared parking components. Parking was also reduced overall, and there were some additional sharing provisions added. So that, those are kind of the essentials. And then in terms of things that were discussed over the last couple of meetings that were expressed as concerns at the public hearings and how those were addressed, one big one was building height. So we talked, we've, we've talked at length over, over the years, really since the incentive housing zone was first discussed about three versus four stories. And that's where your building form requirements are so important, because that really has such an impact in terms of what a three or four story building looks like and how it interacts with the street and the buildings around it. So if you have appropriate building form requirements, that really will get you a long way in terms of making the building look appropriate for the area. And that's why there was some comfort level with having four stories. But ultimately, what was decided was that the four story, that, that three stories would be permitted right here, at 35 feet. And that anything higher than that could potentially be allowed, but would require a special permit from the commission. So if you wanted to go to four stories, up to 45 feet, you would have to apply from a, apply for a special permit from the commission. And the commission has that higher level of jurisdiction in that case. We already have the building form standards in place, but then they could really take a deep dive in terms of the appropriateness of the location of the building, how it interacts with the buildings around it and the specifics of the design and the roof design of that, of that building. So four stories went to special permit. That was the change that came out of that conversation. Form-based codes, I, I started to talk about that. That was already a component of the regulations. It's, like I said, been sort of beefed up based on some input that we had. We got a lot of helpful input from Mr. Lazarus.
Thank you.
In terms of some of the requirements we had with, with the roof line and some of the, the building form treatments. And we, and also in terms of where our building entrances are and things of that nature. The other thing that we added into the building form standards is a window maximum amount, a maximum amount of windows on upper stories. There was a concern about a more modern sort of glass building look not being desirable. So we, there's a minimum window requirement on the first floor, because that's what makes a building inviting and that's what makes people want to walk by it. But there's a maximum window requirement on, there's a minimum and a maximum for the other stories. So that's something that was added in since the last meeting. I'm going to move down here and obviously if people have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Parking, like I said, the majority of changes have already been approved and are already in place for those properties that are in our CA, our existing CA 6 zone and that will be in what will become the town center zone. We did fine tune some of these requirements. The proposal is generally much more permissive than what originally existed. And so this also has been discussed at length at several workshops for, for some years now, I think also dating back to the incentive housing zone conversations. And we're sort of in this, it's, it's interesting. Some people think there's not enough parking now. Some people think there's too much parking now. So some people think we should go to zero parking requirements and, and not require any parking. Some people think we shouldn't reduce the parking requirements at all. I think what the commission came up with and, and based on the data that we have, I, I, I think that we've, we've found a, a good middle ground where there are a lot of options available to people, but you also have to have some buy-in in providing parking. My, my primary concern with going to zero parking is that the first developer or two or three that come in, max out their site and kind of use up the public parking that's available to everybody else. And then everybody else has a problem. So this gives a lot of leeway, there are a lot of options. You can, we, we increased the number of spaces that you could pay the fee in lieu quite a bit. So there's an option to, if you can't physically provide the parking, you can pay into a fund that goes towards public parking and streetscape improvements and things of that nature in the future. I think that was limited to originally, was it 10% of the spaces? And now it's up to 50% of the spaces? 65, 65% of the spaces, I'm sorry. So we, and that was again, to give people some real opportunities. So then you have buy-in as the developer or the property owner, you're contributing, but we, but it also gives you opportunities to do things on your lot if you've got limited space. There's a sharing component. There's also a component where you can make your parking available to sort of the general public. And if you do that, it counts as extra spaces, sort of. So we did also address some comments and questions that came up regarding assigning parking spaces for residents. What came out of that was that it can be done, but it does not count towards your sharing requirement because it can't be used by commercial tenants or other people. So that was the determination that was made about that. And as I added, we did add an access management section to limit curb cuts. Density is sort of the last major point that was raised at the last set of meetings, or I think the last thing that needed to be hashed out. And so right now, we don't have a specific residential density in place at all. And so I think it's, it's appropriate to have one in place and to have one that's specific. As I mentioned, I think that it's important to keep the town center zone as a commercial zone with a supportive residential component. The, the density proposed, the 26 to 30 units per acre is still, allows for quite a bit of housing units, quite a bit, quite a large amount of housing units or a, at least a fair amount of housing units. This is something, and there are copies up on the table that I provided to the commission at their request, examples of existing buildings in town, in, in the area and what their current densities are. There are a lot of, obviously this one is the outlier because it's on .09 acres and it has 11 units. So it's on a pretty limited piece of property with a pretty large number of units. And, and it varies pretty widely in here. But I think Parker Place is going from 29 units per acre to 49. But again, that's in our, what would be our TOD area, not in our town center zone. So that'd be the higher residential area. There was a building recently approved on South Main and Center Street, and that was approved at 29 units per acre. So there are several examples in here. And then on the next page is some information about what other towns, I reached out to some of the other towns to find out what they require. And it was somewhat all over the place. I mean, in some place in Norwich, it's three dwelling units per lot. In West Hartford, it's 43 units per acre with a 15% increase if you have affordable. So it's, it's again, pretty varied, but it's, it's pretty consistent, generally a little bit lower than what we're allowing, just slightly lower, but it's pretty consistent with what we're proposing. So I think that's a, that's a good sign. And then there was also a presentation sort of that I gave the commission in your packets, which I will, if you want me to run through, I will, but I'll give you the opportunity when I'm done, if you want to ask me to run through it or not. Okay. All right. So this is just some, some examples of densities. And this is really, as I, as I told the commission, this isn't intended to be a proponent of a particular density or anything of that nature, but really to show that so much of what matters has to do with what your building form requirements are in terms of what you end up with and how a, a particular density can be so misleading or, or can, can look so many different ways. So what, what I did here, and a, a lot of it was taken from this density of development from the Twin Cities metropolitan area. So I just want to give them credit as the source for most of these. You see one, and then on the next page, it, it tells, I blocked out the density and then you can see what the density is. So I'll run through it really quick. So for example, you see that. And the thing here is to really think about, you know, is this something that I think is appropriate for, for our town center or not? And then how does it compare to the dwelling units? And again, sometimes the, the densities can vary a lot. That's at 24. This one is housing. Oops, that was, sorry, seven. Up this one's 10 units per acre, again, housing. These are all pure housing. It does get into mixed use. So that's 18 units per acre. With this one, if you think about what you think of it, that's at 28 units per acre. This one is at 40 units per acre. So again, it can be somewhat surprising and largely based on building form. This one, only 24 units per acre. That's at 28. And again, we're proposing 26 to 30 depending on your lot size. There was also discussion of going a little bit higher by special permit. And, and obviously the commission could discuss that and could decide to do that tonight if, if that's desired. 46. 32. 45. Now that one again is, that one's pure residential, so you'd have to modify a little. This one is 78. 46. 41, again, pure residential. That one's at 80. That's 59. It's up to 196. I mean, that's very dense, obviously. And they're in no particular order. That's on purpose. And that's it. So that's something that I present, I provided to the commission just to kind of make that point and, and for consideration purposes. So like I said, the conversation did come up about potentially going a little higher by special permit. It's not what I've put in there, but obviously that's, that's up to the commission to discuss. And then finally, there was a mention of the potential of an actual master plan. A master plan could be two things. One would be a comprehensive plan for the town, like your plan of development, plan of conservation development. The other is a, a, it's, it's more of a specific development plan for a property or for a group of properties. I, I think in, in Wallingford's case, I think we've done a lot of planning. I think we've done a lot of appropriate planning. And I think what we have proposed is the right balance between allowing property owners the opportunity to determine what exactly is appropriate for their property or what they'd like to do on their property and having the right regulations and requirements in place to make sure that it's appropriate for the town. So I, I think we're actually going in the right direction with the way that we're proposing to do it rather than having a mu, a more specific master plan for those properties, especially since we don't tend to engage in public-private partnership. So in closing, after, thank you all for your, your patience and interest. And thank you to the commission. So I, like I said, what I think we're proposing is the right balance for Wallingford. I think we're facilitating development while ensuring it is the type of development we want for our town center, but not directly dictating what can happen on a property or exactly how, exactly how it can happen. So we leave the details and the specifics to the individual property owners in the market. I think we have a, a good regulation in place. I will say regulations are always fluid and they can always change as situations change, as details change, as things come up. We can and probably will need to make changes over the years, and I would welcome that. As I said, I think this is a very exciting time for Wallingford, and I think we're pursuing a lot of different avenues to implement our planning, and I think this is a huge piece in that puzzle.
Can you just turn the light on, please? No, right on your, on the projector. It's right in my eyes. I just pulled the plug. Highly technical. Excuse me. Thank you very much, Mrs. Hand, for that presentation. Now, before I ask any commission members for their comments, I'd like to go out to the public for comments from the public. I would just simply ask you, if you have comments, please come forward, state your name and address and what your, what your comments may be.
And Mr. Chairman, I didn't talk about the actual zoning boundaries. I assume we'll do that.
Well, that's going to be on our next. If we approve these regulations, then we'll move on to our, the third item on our agenda. Yes?
Good evening. Tim Ryan from the Economic Development Office. And I first want to thank the commission. You guys have been dogging about this whole process for well over a year. We've witnessed, and economic development is here in full support with this regulation tonight. We've witnessed every single workshop. We've participated in every single meeting, every public hearing. And there are some common denominators that I think are important to spell out. First, we are all extremely interested in seeing activity in our town center. We all believe that a more vibrant town center has economic development benefit, economic benefit for this town that goes well beyond the town center. It is a fact, not my opinion, but a fat, white paper fact, that industrial parks are filled by town, with town, in towns, their town centers are more vibrant, more active. CEOs want to move their companies to where there are vibrant town centers. We have a uniqueness in Wallingford in that we have a town center. We have neighboring towns, Cheshire, North Haven, Handen. Casey and I have been to meetings where folks in those communities told us they'd give their right arm to have our town center. Yet for years and years, as has been recognized earlier, the town center hasn't changed from a certain perspective on the hill downward. It hasn't changed in 40 to 50 years. So if not now, when? This is a fantastic opportunity. I salute you all for the process. We've witnessed the angst, especially Casey going through detail after detail, saying, you know, putting together something that will work in a town center that is full of uniqueness on every single site because it's made up of so many small individual properties. So there's no such thing as a one-size-fits-all, but this is the basis of trying to stimulate some activity. We've got, as Casey mentioned, we've got the incentive housing zone. We've got tax abatements that we put in place thanks to our town council. We've, we've got transit-oriented development opportunities that are coming our way. This becomes another piece of the puzzle. This is what government does. We, we fertilize the ground to stimulate activity and let the developers, the property owners, create that activity. So again, on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, I salute you for the process. I'm very proud of the process. It was elongated because people came forward and said, hey, I've got an issue or I've got a question or I, I want to, I want to, I want to add another perspective. People shared concerns and you listened and you stopped the process and went back to workshop and you discussed them. As was mentioned, some changes came out of that. So I think this is government in action and, and that's, it's, that's a good thing. And again, I salute the process. I thank you for your patience. And on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, we ask that you, let's pass this ordinance tonight. Let's get going. Let's get it started. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public will start on this side and then we'll move over to the, to the left. Yes, gentleman in the back. I was referring to you, John. John Walworth, 28 Laurelwood Drive. I would like to just emphasize for those who are new this evening and for the news media, that this has been a collaborative effort, not just by the commission and Casey, but really a partnership which involved the EDC and Tim, of course, members of the Wallingford Center, Inc., and citizens, developers, owners, to really come up with a, a solution that works just as Casey said, for the town and to incentivize investment downtown. I was happy to have written a letter to Casey back in May or June of 2014, asking for a workshop that we might start this process. Later met with the mayor and we asked if there was a way we can open a path for a zone change that would modernize the regulations downtown. That was called a, a pathway for the, a new vital downtown. While he was supportive, he said, we really should be waiting for the plan of conservation development to, to be adopted before such a zone change should take place. So in, in that stead, property owner and developer, Vincenzo Di Natale, wrote a letter to, or, or made an application to the commission in January of 2016, hopefully that that regulation change would parallel the adoption of the plan of conservation development. And as Casey noted, those parking, what evolved to be parking changes were approved in January of 2017. Recognizing that it wouldn't just be parking regulations that would be the incentive for new development downtown, Vincenzo wrote a second letter to the commission in May of 2017, asking that other regulations furthering the plan of conservation development be adopted. And Casey rightfully so said, no, that really should be even a much more comprehensive plan that really looked at all the things that you're seeing tonight. So yes, I'm proud to have been part of that partnership and to support the regulations as, as are before you and that, that we may move ahead and something we've been working on for many years. Thank you very much. Thank you. Other members of the public, if you please show your hands on the right side that would like to speak. Moving over, I'll move to the, to the left side of the auditorium. Would there anyone would like to speak? Yes, gentleman in the back.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. This is more of a question on how the regulations are written, just a clarification.
Sure.
On here, it says.
Which page are you on, Mr. Gross?
Yeah, that's what I was going to get for you. Page three. It says, and it's C at the top of the page, shall not be permitted in any basement without approval of a special permit. So you're talking about dwellings, ground dwellings that are considered basement apartments that I think because of the contour of the land would have, the aggresses would be ground level. So then it says residential, so now you go to C not, C, same page, nine. Residential dwellings units is permitted in section 4.26 B15 above and include in total permitted calculations that are located in a walkout basement. So then you go to page two, I think it is, at the bottom. And they says, B, shall not be located on any first floor except only the number of units required to provide mobility. Okay. So if you allow one on the basement apartment, what becomes the first floor?
Mrs. Hand, if you please clarify that for the gentleman.
We, we have a definition of basement in our regulations, but basically the first floor is the main unit that's at, that's at grade and the basement would be, there's a certain percentage, I think it's 50% is, is below, is actually below grade.
So if you have the contour of the land, because if you're going down Center Street, you have quite a incline there, the pitch is there, that you could technically have, would that count as a floor then? So you could go up five stories? Can you build bigger apartments? That's the que, the question here. Because then does the floor above that become technically the first, the second floor? And now apartments are built there, kind of defeating what you want?
Right. So, and, and that's exactly what the, the sort of conundrum there was. Obviously, we run into that on a property, on the property on, on Main Street already. So the, the, the floor that opens to the main grade would be the first floor. If a certain percentage of that floor is below grade, so if you're, you know, like this and the building's halfway through, that's going to, that's going to be defined as a basement. But we may, we may run into situations where that's going to have to be a discretionary determination, but there is, there is guidance based on the regulation.
I'm just questioning. I mean, I don't see, okay. Second, as you mentioned, that you don't have any control of what the outside of the buildings look like. Why, I mean, I think you should have some control and certain, the communities do, do put that in the regulations.
So we do, I mean, we have form-based standards in here. They take a lot of control of what the outside of the building looks like. What we don't, what we cannot legally regulate is things like, is full building design. I've talked about this. So per state law, the only times you can regulate full-blown building design, so like building materials, things like that, is in an incentive housing zone or a village district. So in our incentive housing zone, we do do that. In this zone, we cannot legally do that. So in some of the towns that do it, it's because they have a village district. In a village district, the idea, because we did look into doing that, a village district, the idea is that you're looking to maintain existing character. And we decided that that wasn't really, in, in, in all the portions of our town center, we're not necessarily looking to maintain existing character. I think we're looking to improve character. So we built in as much as we could with building forms, so windows, having recesses in the building, having roof standards, but we just can't dictate things like, we can never dictate color. And then we can't dictate things like building materials.
But you can't dictate signs.
We can dictate signs.
Size of the sign and the.
Well, yes, not the content of the sign, but yes, size of the sign and height of the sign, not color.
Okay. And lastly, then neon, I know it's not permitted, but I don't see it like, just not allowed in this district. Shouldn't you, shouldn't you just ostracize it and just say no?
The electronic signs, you mean, or the, or the neons? Yeah, so we are going, another new step is we have a moratorium on electronic boards right now and we're, electronic signs, and we're figuring that out. And yeah, that's a good point. I think one of the recommendations should and will be that in this zone, we don't allow them. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Other members of the public? Yes, gentleman in the back. John Luternow, Three Region Court. I want to thank you for the time that you've put into this. Casey, thank you for the time you put into it. And it's been a long, long road. And hopefully, I'd like to see you take a vote tonight on this, move it along. And after you take the vote, I don't want to consider it, it's the end, but the beginning. Let it be the beginning for a very good vibrant downtown. There's a lot going on down there. There's a lot going on down there and I think these regulations are needed. You're going to be talking about the map. That is also needed. But I look at this as what a great opportunity for Wallingford and it's time. As Casey said, she's pulled documents that are going back decades. And Wallingford is good at creating documents. We do it well. I know, I'm part of it. But tonight I see it and I see the enthusiasm in the audience. I've seen it at the workshops and what I appreciate is you've listened. You've listened to what the public has to say. You've listened to our economic development, which does a superb job. So, let's move forward with this and let it be the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak on the, on these proposed regulations? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for comments from commission members. Anyone? Everyone? Somebody? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to, you know, many of the previous speakers already said this, but, you know, this really was a collaboration with the public, Casey, and the commission. And there, you know, there was really a lot of public input, which, you know, really added to this process, which I'm really happy about. We did not dictate, you know, the, we took the public input and I think that process worked really well. So, I just want to point that out. I do have two comments though on the application and Casey mentioned it in her presentation about the density and I'll just throw it out to the commission. She suggested we add, you know, we have a couple, you know, the 26 units per acre, 30 units per acre, but she also suggests we add a provision in there for a special permit if we want to go higher than that. And I just, I would support that. I don't know if, you know, we want to consider that. And my second question or concern, and overall I do support the regulation changes with that one exception to the special permit. The inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger dated March 1st concerns me because they point out that the Public Utility Commission has a resolution in place that affirms that it would not support any increase in the zoning density set forth in the zoning map that would result in an increase in the required capacity in the town's water and sewer systems. Now, Eric Kruger goes on and I support his statement and that, you know, these density changes are not going to put a extreme, you know, impact on the capacity. But that statement alone concerns me because, quite frankly, it can have an impact on other applications and I'm thinking of one specifically, but, you know, I'm kind of at a loss to figure out, you know, what has precedence here.
The water and sewer divisions have a policy in place and it's like, it's a standing policy townwide that they, yeah, that they won't support, that they don't support any regulations that involve an increase in density. And I think part of that was based on conversations and an agreement that we had with the state under a previous state plan of development and in terms of what became our utility provision areas and were not our utility provision areas. And so, yes, they take a sort of universal position about opposing any increase in residential density. And then, like in this case, I mean, I guess in a way it was a good thing we didn't have a specific density before in place. So, obviously in our downtown, that's, in our town center, that's one of the things that Wallingford is really fortunate about is that we do have all that infrastructure in place because that's what a lot of the towns don't have. So, I, obviously I don't think it's necessarily an issue for this application like you alluded to, but I do think that's a conversation perhaps we should have with them moving forward about. I mean, ultimately, it's up to the commission. They're your zoning regulations, so we may need to look at it on a more case-by-case basis, but that's something perhaps that would be worth having a departmental conversation about kind of where that comes from and when it really needs to apply and when maybe there's some room for discretion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members? Mr. Tryon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I would echo a lot of the comments that have already been made. This has been a collaborative effort with a lot of input from the EDC, from residents, from developers, from property owners. And I am certainly in favor of these regulations. To me, it seemed that there were two primary issues that were preventing large-scale development in our downtown. One was our restrictive regulations, which we're addressing now. That's our buy-in as a planning and zoning commission. The other issue, as you will see when you start to take a look at the map, are the small lot sizes in the downtown. That's the other thing, that's the other part that's preventing development in our downtown. And what we need is we need now some buy-in from maybe developers, property owners, and possibly even the town. I see a town council here tonight and I know that we're sitting on a very large rainy day fund, all right? But that's the other problem is that we need people to buy in, to start to accumulate some of these properties when they come up on the market, so that we can start to see some large-scale development, so that we can see developers now take advantage of these tools that we are giving them. And we, so we need some buy-in. We've given you our buy-in. This is what we can do. We now need some buy-in from local property owners, developers, EDC, market, market the heck out of Wallingford. This is a time, this is an exciting time, this is a big opportunity and I'd like to see some of this momentum go forward and continue. But we need some buy-in as well because we can only do so much. The other issue is accumulating properties so that we have some large properties in the downtown area to develop. And that's not something that we can change. We can't change the lot sizes. We need somebody to accumulate, accumulate them. And so, you know, we're going to do what we can tonight. This is the first step, as Mr. Laterno said, in a process, but we need, we need some buy-in from everybody else as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. Other members? Because I'd just like to make some general comments. I know I, first, as I mentioned in my somewhat long-winded comments to begin this, I do appreciate all the people who participated in this process, whether it be at our prior public hearing, this public hearing, as well as the various workshops. And again, I certainly like to thank our town planner for all of her efforts. Now, I'm in, you know, in full support of these regulations. You know, looking at it and I appreciate the, you know, the comment that Mr. Cohen made concerning the comment made by our senior engineer of our water and sewer department, you know, looking at that, quite frankly, it's somewhat confusing and I think it's, I think he's confusing himself and there may be just a little bit of, I don't want to say double talk in here, but I think it is something that at a later date needs to be discussed with the water and sewer division. As far as, you know, increasing the density, in my opinion, I feel very comfortable with the, with the 30 units. As our town planner indicated, our incentive housing zone right now is at about four units lower than this. And clearly, that's an area where we're looking for higher density as well as the TO proposed transit-oriented district, which, you know, hopefully we'll be working on shortly. So, if we were to increase the density in this particular zone, only logic would say we'd have to increase the densities significantly more in the other zones. Certainly, we need to increase the density in our incentive housing zone. The other thing is to make it a special permit to allow for additional density. I don't really know how you would be able to evaluate that on a project-by-project basis. I think the only really way you could look at it is to look more at the economics of the project, you know, what to develop, why does he, why does he or she need additional units to make a project viable? And when you start doing that, you start looking at land costs, you start looking at a budget, development costs, all of those things, which clearly is not the purview of the planning and zoning commission and is, you know, something that we don't, you know, we don't want to put our toe into that water. So, with that, I feel very comfortable with the, you know, with the 30 units and, you know, keeping it at that. As far as, there's had been a fair amount of discussion in our workshops concerning the parking and I think what's been proposed concerning the parking requirements, our town planner, I believe through input from the public, has come up with what I think is certainly a very good compromise on the parking issue. So, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm certainly very supportive of these regulations as they are presented. Anyone else? Before, yeah, before I ask to, motion to close the public hearing, I'll ask for any further comments from our town planner.
Just one thing. I meant to mention this and I forgot. We moved around public utility buildings, public utility buildings, facilities and uses several times and it got left out. It should be added to number 11 in by right uses. So, we have government, so it should say government facilities, buildings and uses and public utility buildings, facilities and uses. And...
What item was that, Casey?
Number 11. Oh, on page two, B-11. So, in the by right uses. The water and sewer division pointed that out and I, you reminded me.
And Mrs. Han, I'm not sure if this is really germane or not. There's just, when I was looking, just looking through the regulations, there's just a, you know, one or two typos in here.
Yes, I can see two.
Page six. In the first paragraph, first sentence for H on page six.
Yes, yep.
And then just on, what I see on page 13 on D. And again, there just needs to be a parentheses in there, but just, that would just need to be cleaned up.
13...
Yes, page 13, D.
Oh, as may be amended?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I take it that does not have to be part of the motion. Is that correct or should it?
I think you could say in the motion, just as...
As discussed on the record?
Yeah. Typos to be corrected, as discussed on the record.
And you mentioned you had picked up one or two. Are those the ones that you had picked up or are there further ones?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, with that, there's no other comments from commission members. And Mrs. Han, if you've completed your comments, I'd entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vanoyt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? And at this point in time, I've entertained a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a zoning regulation amendment for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to create new zoning regulation 4-4.26 Town Center District that will include, but not be limited to, the following components. Allow for mixed-use development with residential densities up to 20, 26 and 30 per acre. Allow for decreased modified parking requirements, generally consistent with the parking requirements for the CA-6 zone approved in June 2016, and create new modified building form and site layout standards appropriate to a town center. B, add to section 2.2 definitions in association with creation of the Town Center District. C, make associated changes to other sections of the zoning regulations to remove references to the CA-6 zone and/or where appropriate to reference the Town Center Zone, namely 3.1 Establishment of Districts, 4.5.D.3 Commercial, 5.1B Schedule of Lot and Building Requirements, 6.9 Signs, and 6.12 Landscaping, Screening and Buffer Areas, as proposed in the document entitled Proposed Zoning Text Amendment, Application 904-18, dated July 5th, 2018. Subject to the following conditions of approval. Comments of the Fire Marshal dated July 6, 2018. Comments of the Senior Engineer Eric Kruger dated March 1st, 2018. We modify a section 2.B.11 to include by right uses. Based on the totality of the record, we make a few minor typo changes because we wish to facilitate development appropriate for the town center to spur economic development and make Wallingford a more vibrant community and because the town center regulations as desired to be changed fit in with our plan of conservation and development. And we just need an effective date.
I would recommend 8/17 this Friday.
Effective 8/17/2018.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a second.
Second.
Second, and we'll begin voting with Mr. Hein.
Yes to approve.
Yes.
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 Yes, and the application's been approved again. Casey, thank you very much for this. This brings us on to our second public hearing. It's a zoning map amendment by the Planning and zoning commission for our town center. And Mr. Madarazzo, you did such a great job earlier auditioning for reading this. If you would now please read the legal notice.
Practice makes perfect.
And I'll note all correspondence if you would.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice application number 905-18. Zoning map change to change the following properties from their existing zoning designation to the newly drafted Town Center TC District as specifically shown on the map filed in the office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall, 45 South Main Street. 1 through 423 and 4 through 432 Center Street, 13 and 143 Church Street, Wallingford, 43, 120, 139 and 147 Hall Avenue, 467 15 Meadow Street, 1012 1433, 46 and 63 North Cherry Street, 28 35 41 45, 57 65 79 85 and 99 North Colony Street, 4 North Elm Street, 2 through 114 and 3 through 121 North Main Street. 2 through 114 and 3 through 121 North Main Street, 19 through 29 and 20 through 26 North Orchard Street, 11 and 20 North Woodlesee Avenue, 26 through 178 and 51 through 183 Quinipiac Street, 9 and 11 South Cherry Street, 1 and 23 South Colony Street, 7 South Elm Street, 435, 45, 50 and 64 South Main Street, 18, 24 and 28 South Orchard Street, 14 South Woodlesee Avenue, 0, 11, 25, 29, 43 and 45 Wallace Avenue, 163 Washington Street, 10 through 20 and 13 through 21 William Street. The proposed map change is available at, and any questions may be directed to, the Planning and Zoning Department, Town Hall, 45 South Main Street, or at 203-294-2090. The proposed map change in its entirety is also filed in the office of the Town Clerk, 45 South Main Street, and is posted for viewing on the Town of Wallingford website at www.town.wallingford.c t.us. And we have an interdepartmental referral application 902-18, dated 2/14/18. We have some correspondence dated 3/16/18? Signed, Adam.
Manziris.
Correspondence dated March 6, 2018. And, oh, from Robert Rose. Planning and zoning meeting minutes dated March 12, 2018. And that would be it.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. And now, Mrs. Han, if you would please give us the, your presentation on the zoning map, a proposed zoning map amendment.
Sure. Sorry to go through this. Okay, so just as some background in terms of how we developed the potential regulation, the discussion that, or the potential zone boundaries, rather, the discussion was that we based it on the recommendation that was made in the Plan of Conservation and Development, and I'm going to go back here for a minute. That was made in the Plan of Conservation and Development, combined with the boundaries that the Electric Division uses, and then for their Town Center rate. And then we had some further discussion and modified that a little bit further. So I, as a backdrop to that, under the previous proposal, the boundary was a little bit different, and that was partly based on somewhat of an error. The original proposal for the Plan of Conservation and Development and the original conversation for the Plan of Conservation and Development was this boundary. And so it's slightly different, that combined with the, so when we based it on, this was what was originally discussed as the potential boundary in the Plan of Conservation and Development, but it actually ended up being this boundary. So things were actually a little bit different in the final plan, and that's the one that we should have used. But originally, I used this one. So again, you can see that difference. So some of the properties that had been of question are not included anymore. And then we combine with, so those are the Electric Division boundaries. If we combine those two, so again, this is what's actually recommended in the final Plan of Conservation and Development as our Town Center boundaries. These are the Electric Division boundaries. That's the combination of the two. And then that brings us to, so this is what is, again, what's recommended in the plan combined with the Electric Division versus the previous proposal. So this is, that's what was on the last proposal, is the more orangey color, and the lighter yellow is what's under the current proposal. So again, under the current proposal, where we go back up here. So that's again, Plan of Conservation Development, current proposal combined with Electric Division. So that's kind of where we're starting from, or where we should be starting from. And then we had some further conversation about some of the areas and decided to make some modifications over the last several months. So this more neighborhood area adjacent to the cemetery and south of Center Street was removed. This area that's in the CLB, a little bit further south of Center Street, also was removed. So it is included to the, to the credit union. And then this area, which is south on South Colony, so you have the plaza where Stella's Pizza is. That plaza is included, and then everything south of that was removed. That was based on some conversation that we had about the lack of availability of, or concerns about availability of public parking. So to put it in this zone with those much lower parking requirements was raised as a concern. So that area was also removed. And then we also removed this area right along Washington Street, after some conversation about that. So, and I will note, there were some Mr. Manziris's letter and Mr. Gross's letter. There were these, this property on it, on the corner of Academy Street, and the property right directly to the south of it. Those are not included any longer, and they actually weren't included in the final recommendation, so they should not have been included. So those are taken out, as are the properties directly across the street from them. So those were the changes that were made based on sort of our starting point. And then that's the, where we finally end up with what's proposed for the Town Center boundaries. And again, that's based on really trying to make the boundary expansive enough to be inclusive and be conducive to new development, but also limiting it enough to really concentrate the development where it's probably most appropriate and needed most, again, in the future. That boundary could always be modified as times change or as things change, but this is what's proposed for right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Han. I'm going to just request, if we could keep the map up, because there may be, if there are any members of the public that have questions, I think it might be a little bit easier to point out on the map where certain things are, because as our town planner has indicated, there, you know, there have been some changes and reiterations in the map since our, or during our various workshops. So again, with this, this is also a public hearing. Are there members of the public that would like to, you know, speak on the proposed map like last time? Please raise your hand, be recognized, come forward, and name an address. Yes, gentlemen in the back. We'll take the gentleman in the back and then...
John Letourneau, 3 Region Court. It's kind of hard to see from this, and, it's not open. Going down William Street. Where is, it's kind of hard to tell, but behind my building is the bakery. Is that included in this, or did it just miss it?
It includes the lots.
Okay, because there's, I can see where my, where I am, the parking behind me, and then it looks like the line goes right through. I can't determine whether it edges or it goes through.
It doesn't, it doesn't cut any properties in half.
Okay.
If that...
So would that be, would that commercial piece be included?
Is that your question, Mr. Letourneau, if Elizabeth's Bakery is included?
Yeah, is that, is that included in this?
I believe so, because I think that's on that second lot behind you.
Yeah, that is the second lot. It's just, it's hard to tell from here.
Yeah.
Such a, such a wide line going through that...
Yeah, because I think we cut it at the first residential piece.
Okay.
If I could ask Mr. Letourneau, correct the lot that's behind the building that you're in, that is, that's part of the lot that you're building, located on?
Behind me, and then there's the parcel that's the bakery, and their parking.
And then they have parking.
And then it goes residential.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Okay, and Simpson Court, that goes all the way to Church Street. And it goes North Main Street to, it kind of, there's like a jog in there somehow.
Yeah, so on North Main Street, it goes right, on the west side, on the Simpson Court side, it goes to Church Street. On the east side, it stops after the police station.
Oh, it stops right after the police station?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to answer your other question, yeah, it includes Williams Street LLC, yeah, which is the bakery. It's the bakery and the bakery lot, yeah.
And then on South Colony, the Prince Street. So it's going to be just one side of Prince Street?
It goes to Town Hall on the, right, it just goes to Town Hall. That's right. It doesn't go south of Town Hall. So south of, south of there is what's our CLB zone. And actually, right now, Town Hall and the Credit Union are also in the CLB zone. And the CLB is basically our, the transitional zone between the Town Center and the surrounding residences. So the CLB, its center limited business, does allow for multifamily, and it allows for offices, but it doesn't allow for everything that the Town Center Zone allows. So the idea is that it acts as sort of a buffer between the more, somewhat more intensive development of the Town Center Zone and then the surrounding neighborhoods. You kind of have that middle buffer where you can have office and financial institutions and things like that, multifamilies, but you can't have, say, retailer, restaurant.
Okay, but on this map, on Prince Street, coming off of South Colony Road, you go, go to the corner of South Colony and Prince.
It won't move. Oh, right there.
No. South Colony and Prince.
Oh, South Colony and Prince. I'm sorry. I was thinking South Main. Okay, I'm sorry.
So that's, right on the corner is the Splat Art Studio. And then you come up, I believe the next property is...
So it goes, the Town Center includes the property that has Stella's Pizza in it, and...
You're too far down. Go back to Prince Street. I want to concentrate just on Prince Street right now.
Okay, so that's the cemetery.
Right.
And that's the art studio.
That's the art studio. Now you come back over, go click, go to your left. No, no, the other way. I'm sorry, to your right.
The square?
Yeah, those two parcels there. That's the PNA building and the VFW?
Right.
Okay. Come up a little bit more, but there's another factory building in there too that is up, it's probably, it's right next door to, I believe it's right next door to the...
Yeah, I think it's the square.
The PNA.
Oh, I thought it was further down. Okay, which would be the...
It's a long, it's a long, you know, factory building.
Might actually be that. Those are not included in the proposed zone. So the art studio and the two properties to the east of it are in commercial zones, but they're not in the proposed Town Center Zone.
Okay, all right. Okay, for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members? Yes, gentlemen in front.
Hi, Jim Lachlan, 221 North Main Street, just as a concerned member of the community. This is a no-brainer. I think incentives to bring whatever you can into town is an automatic. I also see it as forward-thinking, because you're including the cemetery in a commercial zone, and I noticed Devaney's not here. So part of the forward-thinking of it is, I like the larger envelope, and I don't get cutting that back, because those properties that are, I guess, eastward from the cemetery that were carved out, those might be residential and small, but that's the sort of thing that is going to be more inviting to a developer. Because they're small, they might be able to grab a bunch of those lots together and make it into one development. Or if you come back from Stella's to Foucault's, that would make for a larger lot that now that, where Gaetano's used to be when I was growing up, the gray building in front on Quinipiac Street, and the lot where Stella's is having issues now, going all the way back to Foucault's might make for a more attractive buy for somebody who wants to come in, particularly since it's a, there's tax incentives now and parking, and who knows what they could do there. But if you, if you cut it out, or if you cut those lots out next to Devaney, you know, it may not be as attractive to somebody, knowing that they have to go over the hurdle of first getting a map change before they can submit an application. Just food for thought.
Thank you. I don't know, Mrs. Han, if you'd like to comment on that or not? Because I know we've had discussion on that, on those parcels.
This area, I agree with Attorney Lachlan in many ways, that this residential area, but I think a lot of the property owners in that area were a little bit concerned, and that's why ultimately we decided to take it out. I think if there are some successful developments and uses of the Town Center Zone, it might be something worth revisiting in the future if there's, if we can sort of demonstrate some demand. You know, maybe there's, in the past, we found ways to sort of preserve the residential use to make property owners comfortable and still allow for potential. But I know we decided to take that out just because I think there was concern about by the property owners in the area. This area, I think the concern is primarily that there's not enough sort of cohesion between that area and the Town Center where people are willing to, particular, because particularly because we've become aware of parking problems and things of that nature. So this, this zone so dramatically reduces parking requirements. I still, I mean, there's still opportunity. It's still in a commercial zone. Someone could certainly still buy pieces there and merge them and develop them. But I think there's not a pedestrian cohesion as much between that area and the public parking and the on-street parking. And I think that was the reason that it was taken out.
Thank you. Other members of the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, yes, I don't, yes, sir.
Hello. My name's David Morowski. I live at 11 St. Cherry Street. And I saw that on the map in green for the town electric, I wasn't included in this, but now in the new map I am. I'm just down in C12 at the corner of Cherry Street. My house is... My house is residential. I have a yard, a front yard. I'm wondering how this is going to affect my property. Basically, is everything to stand until I sell property and then it can be developed commercially or residentially? Or is this going to impact my property as it stands?
Which, which one are you?
Uh, if you pull up the green electric map that you used originally, you'll see a little square in the corner that disappears. That's my property.
This right here?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so that, what that means is you are in the electric division boundary, and so because of that, you got included in the proposed town center zone. Um, you're right on the edge, so they included everything that, that has, that was either from the plan and/or part of the electric division benefit. To answer your question, um, if you're, if, if you are to be included in the zone, um, and certainly I think if you, um, have concerns, I'm sure the commission's amenable to listening to them. Um, but yeah, it doesn't mean you have to do anything. It, you have an existing residence there, you can keep your existing residence there. It would be if you, if somebody tore down the residence or somehow otherwise abandoned the residential use of the property, then anything new that happened there would have to be in compliance with the current rec.
Okay. Uh, one last question, does that affect tax bracket in any way for the property taxes for my apartment?
That I don't know the answer to. We would have to ask the assessor's office that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll just bring it back to the, uh, commission for any comments that commission members may have. And once again, Casey, if you would, uh... Thank you. Any commission members with any comments? Anyone? Yes, Mr. Materazzo.
I would, uh, go back to, uh, Mr. Lachlan's comments and, uh, about revisiting, expanding the map, especially over by, maybe not so much on the, um, private properties, the residential properties, on the east side of the, um, cemetery, but the, the commercial properties that are over by Fu Cults. I just see Fu Cults, for one, might, this might give them some incentive to grow and expand. I mean, the, I, I went to school with Charlie and, and they're, they're taking over the business there. I mean, that might be something that they probably appreciate. And, and they have a sizable piece of property there. Possibly some of the other businesses, I mean, they may choose to try to buy out other businesses and expand and, and take advantage of it. And may just give them some opportunities that, uh, they'd appreciate.
But Casey, uh, rather, Mrs. Hand, would this, I guess, you know, facilitate the expansion of an existing business? I mean, Fu Cults, they're a, certainly they're a very longstanding, you know, retail, uh, you know, retail establishment in this town, and hopefully they'll be here for many more years. But I mean, these regulations are, are more geared toward a, you know, a component of, um, commercial, not necessarily very, well, commercial development as well as then, you know, some residential development. So certainly, you know, i- if, if Fu Cults wanted to expand its business and wanted to buy additional properties, I think under the current zoning, they would be allowed to do that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that the question for the commission is, um, do you consider? And I, and what I was looking for as Mr. Materazzo was talking is, and I, I don't have it with me. When we did this, one of the activities that we did as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development was, um, as part of the town center survey, um, was different areas that are kind of on the fringe, and they asked people, "Do you think this is downtown or town center?" And, um, I, I was looking to see if I had the, the answer with me, um, which I don't. But I think the, the question for the commission is, yeah, I mean, so they, they obviously can, anybody can, if you have a commercial piece next to you, you can buy it, you can expand it, you can, um, they're in a CB zone, retail's allowed in a CB zone, they could expand. I think the question for the commission is, do you consider that to be part of the town center? When you think of the town center, or when you think of what we're looking for in the town center, does that area, um, seem to be part of that to you? I, I think that's really the question, and, and I think part of the thing is, some of these areas on the fringe that we didn't include, perhaps, I, I think some of the conversation has been, maybe somewhere along the line, those could get incorporated depending on, on how things go. But that's obviously your, your discretion.
Just really one question, Casey. Some of these properties that are butting up against the zone, they, and if they want to purchase those properties, also can go for a zoning change.
Yeah, I mean, anybody could apply for a zoning change, and I think in that case, especially if it were to be incorporated with an existing town center piece, with a cohesive, with a merger in, with a merger as part of it, I think that might be something the commission would want to consider, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
I guess from my perspective, I feel very comfortable with what we have right, you know, right now. We've, certainly there's been a lot of discussion that's gone into this. There's been some, I want to say some give and take between, uh, you know, the property owners. I think as Mrs. Hand mentioned, you know, we've had several meetings, workshops on this where, you know, people have, you know, voiced their opinions, some of their concerns, and I think the commission is, um, has listened to those. And I, I, I think very much of that is included in this, you know, in this proposed map. I, I think as our town planner indicated, if there was someone who was interested in buying some properties that are contiguous to what we're proposing in, in our map, there would certainly be the opportunity to come forward and ask for a, a zone change. As, you know, kind of building on some of the comments that Mr. Hein made, certainly the commission is, is, is hopeful and, I think, all members, the, the community's hopeful that we will find, uh, some developers that will be interested, uh, in coming in and will find some property owners that, you know, can see the benefit, uh, perhaps of having their properties developed under, under these regulations. So, you know, that being said, I, again, I feel very comfortable that what we, that what we have here. If there's no former, uh, no further, uh, comments from, uh, any commission members, and Mrs. Hand, if you have no further comments, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, to close the public hearing.
Ms., Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Benoit. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I close abstentions, and at this point in time, I've entertained a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, Application 905-18, a zoning map change for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to change the following properties from their existing zoning designation to the newly drafted town center district, as specifically shown on the map entitled Updated Proposed Town Center Zoning District, dated July 5th, 2018, and including the following properties, uh, 1 to 423 and 4 to 432 Center Street, 13 and 143 Church Street, Wallingford, uh, 43, 120, 139, and 147 Hall Avenue, 4, 6, 7, 15 Meadow Street, 10, 12, 14, 33, 46, and 63 North Cherry Street, 28, 35, 41, 45, 57, 65, 79, 85, and 99 North Colony Street, 4 North Elm Street, 2 to 114 and 3 to, uh, 121 North Main Street, 19 to 29 and 20 to 26 North Orchard Street, 11 and 20 North Whittlesey Avenue, 26 to 178 and 51 to 183 Quinnipiac Street, 9 and 11 South Cherry Street, 1 and 23 South Colony Street, 7 South Elm Street, 4, 35, 45, 50, and 64 South Main Street, 18, 24, and 28 South Orchard Street, 14 South Whittlesey Avenue, 0, 11, 25, 29, 43, and 45 Wallace Avenue, 163 Washington Street, 10 to 20 and 13 to 21 William Street, subject to the following conditions of approval, comments from Fire Marshal dated, uh, 214-18 and July 6, 2018, and effective date, 8/17/2018.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Do we have a second on the, uh, motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Benoit, uh, voting beginning with Mr. Hein, please.
Uh, yes, to approve.
Yes.
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 And yes, obviously the application's been approved. Again, Casey, thank you very much for, uh, all of your efforts on this. And continuing with our agenda, Casey, if you would, uh, rather, Mrs. Hand, if you would please, uh, take over the, uh, the rest of this meeting, beginning with the, uh, reports of officers and staff.
Okay, um, administrative approvals. Uh, you have a couple food trucks, um, a couple cell tower modifications, uh, antenna modifications, and, um, a survey waiver, and a change of use for the building on, uh, 1183 Old Colony Road that you previously made an approval for, um, that's being renovated. Any questions?
I think seeing none, if you'd please continue.
Okay. ZBA decisions of July 16th, 2018. Uh, so things of note, um, item number three, that was something that was talked about at the last meeting, that variance was approved at 65 South Colony, um, in regard to the parking requirements. And there was a use variance denied for the gas station at 570 Center Street for an expansion of a non-conforming use. Um, that was, this was an after-the-fact application. And then, uh, there was also a, um, several variants requested for an addition at 12 Russell Street that were denied. Questions?
Anyone questions?
Okay, um, upcoming at this next meeting, um... The only one I think that I would note, or I'll note two of them, um... Well, actually, I'll, I guess I'll explain three of them. Item number one, 383 North Colony, that was a single, that was a house that started to be converted into a commercial use on the first floor, and then there were some issues with the parking, so the conversion of it never actually went, never actually happened all the way. But because there was an application to do it, they gave up their non, their non-conformity. So now they're asking for a variance to keep it as a single-family house. Um, so it's not actually what it appears to be in the sense that it's not actually commercial being switched back. It's that it never actually became commercial to begin with, um, because they couldn't provide the parking. Um, so item number three is, uh, um, a existing, um, there was an existing foundation that's been poured in, a house that's been built too close to a property line. Um, and so they are looking for a variance to address that. That's the second one of those we've seen in the last several years. Um, and that's always of a concern, which is why we recommend that people do their foundation as-built right away and not wait until the house is built. And then finally, 228 South Colony Road. That is right across from Dairy Queen on the corner of Ward and South Colony Road. Um, there was a variance applied for when I first started working here. But at the, it's on a corner, so it's got some restrictions. It's also because of how we knew the designated street line for the setback. The setback, the, the building envelope ends up being really tiny. So the first time they applied for variances, it was at sort of a blanket, a bunch of blanket variances, and we opposed it, um, because there was no specific proposal. Now they've come in with an actual specific proposal. They are maintaining the landscaping that's required, but they do need, um, a setback variance. So we didn't, we didn't take any objection to it, but I did want to point it out. Um, and then before we move on to the, um, zoning enforcement officer's log, just a couple quick updates. I did not give you LED regulations tonight, so I'm hoping to finalize those for you by the end of this week, um, and then send out the doodle polls. So, um, I owe you polls for a meeting in September to talk about ele, um, electronic signage, and then, um, you were looking to do a joint meeting in October with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And, um, what was the other thing? Oh, I'm also going to send out a poll to schedule a meeting of the POCD Implementation Committee, for those of you involved in that, or if you have any interest in that. And, um... I think that, oh, and then the other thing I wanted to update you on is, because it will be coming, is, um, Aquifer Protection, we're doing our yearly inspections right now, um, of the properties that are registered in the Aquifer Protection District. Everyone is also, um, overdue for new registrations. So, um, because most of them have been through the process once already, um, and they established materials management plans at that time, um, and a lot of them haven't changed in operation at all. Uh, but they have to, they, every several years, they have to do a new registration. I'm going to recommend that they do those as administrative applications. And then, um, if you have any questions about a particular one, um, obviously you can ask me, you know, you can have it added to the agenda. But so for, for the ones, like I said, a lot of them haven't changed. Um, if they do change, if they expand at all, they have to come in to you for an actual permit, which is a, a higher level of application, in which case you'd see them anyhow. So it's more of an administrative process, but I wanted to kind of run that by you and see if that was something that you were comfortable with. Um, at least having the applications come through you administratively to begin with.
Any comments? People feel com, uh, commission members feel comfortable with that? I think we're good with that, Kate, uh, Mrs. Hand.
Okay, and then I'll give you the reports from the inspections too. And then, um, finally, zoning enforcement log. As usual, I will, I will leave that to you for questions, comments, concerns, et cetera.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr., uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, Casey, sorry, just to follow up on, you know, last month's meeting with, uh, you know, some of those cemetery items, the, the road and the drainage and, um, I don't know if you had a chance, I volunteered to write that letter, and you're gonna kind of look into, see who might, you know, be responsible for that.
For the, the...
The survey.
Ground penetrating. Yeah, so if you, if, I think that kind of what we talked about, because I did talk about this with Janice a little bit too, is if, I, I, I think that's a little bit beyond our purview as the Planning and Zoning Commission, or your purview as the Planning and Zoning Commission per se, but if you... If you want, so if you want to, if you want to pursue that, um, it's something that we, we'd need to, because we need permission of the owner, which I think is the town. So we need to follow up, for, for that part of it, we need to follow up with the town council.
Okay, uh, you know, that's fine. I, I, I mean, you know, as, as far as, you know, me writing the letter, I would do this not as a member of...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, just, yeah.
Just, okay, that's, that's fine.
What Mr. Cohen would really like is just, he's going to write the letter, but who's the appropriate person that he should send that letter to?
Okay.
I think that's the question.
Okay, okay. And we can talk, I mean, I think what we should probably do is direct it to the town council and see, see the state archaeologist on it, and I can give you all that. that.
Yeah, that, that's perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you, anyone else? Casey, uh, Mrs. Hand?
Just to finish up on that, with, with the other items, with the, the driveway and that, um, we have been meeting internally, and so we're getting that worked out, I've had a couple meetings with Henry McCully and with Rob and Janice, so that is moving forward with a resolution.
Thanks, I, I know it takes time, no, no worries.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Hand, I have just to follow up on a couple things that you and I had discussed with a week, a week ago or so, and the first, and I've also discussed this with our corporate council, and that's the, uh, project that seems to, you know, keep on giving the town a misery, and that's the, uh, the bridge over Center Street?
Yes.
And I know as well know that that's, I mean, the Tappan Zee Bridge is, East Bridge is going to be done before, you know, this small bridge is going to be done, and, and I know that this has probably so far been, what, a, a three-year project with no end in sight, and there hasn't been any work on that, on that bridge, probably for the last nine months, I think it's fair to say, and there's probably no work going to be on that bridge for another nine months, and quite frankly, the site looks like a junkyard. And, uh, you know, I talked to our corporate council to see how we go about getting the state or the contractor that's been, uh, supposedly hired to complete this project, how we get that site at least cleaned up to some degree, because again, I, I think most people, if you, you know, you went by there, you'd certainly, to me, I consider it just a junkyard, and the gentleman who has his property just to the, uh, east of that, the gas station, he invested some funds, uh, you know, into that property to clean up, renovate his property, uh, and I think he's done a, you know, a, a very nice job on that, and then, you know, next to him, he has, again, what I just consider a junkyard, so if you could please just coordinate with our corporate council, uh, because again, she was going to look into that to see if in fact we have any type of recourse, uh, whether it be with the state or the contractor.
Okay, yep.
And then the other one is, the Wooding Parking Lot, we, you know, approved, uh, improvements to that parking lot, you know, numerous months ago, and I noticed, and I think it's still there, about a third of the parking lot, for some reason, is blocked off with a metal fence, and I know you were going to, uh, see if you could get a, a response from, uh, our, uh, engineering department as far as what the status of that is, but more importantly, you know, we're less than two months from Celebrate Wallingford, you know, last year, I mean, that parking lot was, they finally came out and just lined it, but I think we all know that that's a parking lot that's, in, in many times, is in a case of, I won't say disrepair, but certainly needs improvement, and if you, again, could talk with our engineering department, our, uh, public works department, to see what the status of that is, because I, I would really hate to see another year when we have our major event in town, and we have a parking lot that is, it's best substandard.
And I, I did talk to the engineering department about that, and Mr. Baldormitis's understanding was, um, if you remember, we approved a project behind the police station, they're working on, um, a storage building in the back there, and so as part of that project, they've moved some of the cars temporarily kind of over into the Wooding area, and, um, what his, he seemed to, he, he understood, and, and he seemed to think that it would, that it would definitely be resolved prior to Celebrate Wallingford. So once the project is complete, the cars, there's actually more parking spaces upon completion of the project, yeah, than there were before because of how things were redesigned, so it shouldn't be an issue, and, and it should be temporary and resolved prior to Celebrate Wallingford, but I will follow up further on that.
Yeah, and, and guess I, unless I misunderstood that project with the police department, and it's quite possible I did, but I, I believe that building's been completed for some time, has it not?
The building in the back?
Yeah, for the police department, their stor, the, the storage building, I think that's been completed for months.
That...
I, I mean, I, again, I, maybe I didn't understand the plans, but I, I think I did, and I see a much larger structure there than it was there before, so I think the, you know, upon completion of the police department building, may want to inform people that that's been completed for some time.
Yeah, okay.
Good, anyone else have any comments? Yeah, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Vanoyt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned, have a good evening, thank you very much.